All right, so just a quick recap. This is a continuation of the open meeting portion of the Northborough School Committee for Wednesday, June 3rd, which originally started at 7:02 and had a brief executive session and significant technological woes to get us back to this point. That said, I don't need to read again the disclaimer, do I? We did that in open. Okay, perfect. So that brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is a series of is action on a series of minutes as as indicated in the superintendent's memo in the packets. So entertain a motion to approve these. As a point of order, can we do open session minutes in batch? Isn't that okay, Greg?
Yes, you could do the open meeting minutes in batch and then separately the executive session minutes.
Yeah, separately, just so there's no confusion on the releasing of executive sessions. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes that are from special and open meetings. Initially, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Frank.
I move that we accept and approve the special open meeting minutes of January 25th, 2020, the open meeting minutes of May 6th, 2020, and the special open meeting minutes of May 14th, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
My second Jones motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Bailey Jones. Any discussion about any of these three sets of minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table to accept these three sets of minutes as indicated by Mrs. Frank. I'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
I saw you mouth it. The mouthing counts. We can speech read. Myself, myself, Mr. Labelle, yes, the motion passes unanimously and the meeting minutes are accepted.
I'd like to move to vote, I'm sorry, I'd like to move to approve and release the minutes from the executive session on January 25th, 2020, and the minutes from the executive session on May 6th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to approve these minutes and release them. Any discussion? Motion and second. Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote to approve the aforementioned executive session minutes to approve and release. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And me, Keith Labelle, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next item is we have two more sets of executive session minutes, I believe.
Correct.
Yes, moving to the next page here. So I'll entertain a motion for these as well. These are also to vote to approve and release.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to release the retained executive session minutes from September the 4th, 2019, October the 2nd, 2019, November 4th, 2019, December the 4th, 2019, January 6th, 2020, and February 5th, 2020.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Take a roll call vote to approve and release the aforementioned executive session minutes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Myself, Keith Labelle, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is action on subcommittee minutes. I will entertain a motion to take these in batch as well, as long as they're read into record, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept the subcommittee minutes as listed. Policy Development Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from February the 5th, 2020, Operational Budget Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from January the 2nd, 2020, Operational Budget Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from May the 4th, 2020, and Capital Planning Subcommittee Meeting Minutes from November the 4th, 2019.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
So moved by Mrs. Frank and seconded by Mrs. Bailey Jones. I do have one correction on the Capital Planning Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of November 4th, 2019. I'm listed as absent and was present.
So I will amend my original motion to include the corrected Capital Planning Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of November 4th, 2019 to change from being absent to attending. Keith?
I second the amendment.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote on this set of aforementioned subcommittee minutes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And myself, Keith Labelle, yes, motion passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to new business and I will hand it over to Mr. Mark Noe.
So thank you.
Some updates for us.
So I want to provide the community and the committee with an update on the COVID-19 health situation. I'm going to have each director give a brief update of some of the work that's been happening. We're really, at this point in time, really looking at transitioning to the end of the school year and making sure that we are in good stead in terms of closing out the year. Our educators and schools are really looking at class placement and much of our work is also thinking about what reopening will look like in the fall. We are planning for various scenarios. Our hope is that if we're able to safely to reopen our doors in the fall and have all students return. However, if we are not able to do that, we are looking at a hybrid approach. Currently, there is a survey for families to complete around the two hybrid options that we're thinking about. This evening, we have over 750 responses from community members and that input is very helpful as we look to make a decision. This week, we, the superintendents did have a conference call with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, and he indicated that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was going to be much more prescriptive in its approach than it has been in the past. And most likely, they will provide a district-wide response to reopening. He did mention that those guidelines would be shared in the next couple of weeks and we're waiting for those because those are essential for us to move forward. However, the feedback that we're asking for families to provide us is still very valuable as most likely, the commissioner's prescriptive guidance will be one of those options if we're forced to go into a hybrid mode. And regardless whether it's a hybrid or we remain in remote learning because the COVID-19 health situation has not changed, we are working on making sure that we have a robust remote learning system in place for the fall and that Innesboro Connect 2.0 and educators' work with students is as strong as possible in a remote setting. So right now, we're waiting for the survey to close on Friday and we'll be, we have a reopening advisory panel that will be continuing to work on this and will continue to wait for guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we will be sharing information with the community as it becomes available to us. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Becky Pellegrino and have her speak briefly about the finances with the COVID-19 specifically around kindergarten and kindergarten tuition reimbursement. I think there's been a number of questions that have been asked of our office and the goal this evening is to provide some clarity around reimbursement in kindergarten tuition. So I will turn it over to Becky at this point in time.
Thank you, Greg. So Greg has up on his screen some of the numbers that we looked at in terms of the refunds for the kindergarten tuitions. It's important to point out that about 40% of our total salaries do come from the tuitions and the remaining 60% are actually on our operational budget. So those salaries represent $344,000 out of the tuition revolving fund. Now, in looking at what our actual numbers are for this year in terms of where our revenues were and our expenses, as you can see, we started the year with a small amount of money. We started with about $1,500 as our starting balance in the kindergarten revolving account. To date, we have received in tuition revenue $378,068. If, so when we look at what our salaries and our expenses are, the 344 from up above, we are projecting an ending balance of about $34,000, just about $35,000. When we had met last month and the committee voted to approve a 40% refund on those tuitions, we did know that there was going to be an impact to the operational budget. The actual tuition refunds right now have totaled $52,127, which means that our revolving account would have a negative amount of $17,194, which would have to be offset by our operational budget. Using those same numbers at 100% reimbursement with the same salary figures and again with those same expenses and revenues, if we were to refund 100% of our tuitions, which we estimate to be $111,487 during the closure time period, we would see an impact to the operational budget of $76,554. So this is a significant cost to our operational budget. When we planned for FY '20, we did take into consideration the tuitions that we were anticipating and as such, made staffing decisions based on what those projections were. And in fact, this year, as you all are aware, at one of our schools, we did need to add an additional classroom because of the number of kindergarten students who enrolled over the summer months. And those, that salary is reflected in our revolving account that is paid for 100% through the revolving account. So we are continuing to work with the finance team at the town of Northborough to process this refunds as well as other refunds that are due to, to our families, such as for nature's classroom, for cafeteria. They have had their own refunds that they have had to issue. And so that work is ongoing and we do expect those refunds to be generated within the next couple of weeks.
And just a general comment that when we collect tuition for whatever program, whether it's preschool or kindergarten, our responsibility legally, we have to use that tuition for the purpose of why it was collected. So the kindergarten tuition needs to go to the kindergarten program. And any, you know, we began with a beginning balance of $1,519.89 and again, that was from collecting tuition in FY '19 that rolled up into FY '20 that again, were applied for the purpose of the reason why it collected, which was for kindergarten. So, and the other point that Becky made is that this is $17,000 in our operational budget that we did not budget for, that we had to find the funds to support our kindergarten program as a result of the pandemic.
Keith, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So Greg, can we just speak to the peoples who, the feedback from the community, who people who feel that, you know, they're paying for something that they're not getting?
Yeah, so I think that, as Becky mentioned, you know, we launched the FY '20 year with a certain number of staff members, a certain number of kindergarten teachers to support the full day K program. So that relied on tuitions that we were collecting. So we, you know, we collected those tuitions, we hired the faculty and staff. And then obviously, the pandemic arrived and we were required to go into remote learning. We still had those faculty and staff with classes and students who are providing remote learning. It's not as if we could have reduced our faculty and staff at the K level in half because, you know, because we went into the remote learning mode. We do know that for many families, you know, I think some of the comments that we received was why didn't we get 100% reimbursement? Is that tuition reimbursement offsetting other parts of the budget? And the answer is no, it's really all tuitions collected from kindergarten are supporting the kindergarten operation. And in fact, with a 40% reimbursement rate, we're still unable to meet the expenses. Kelly, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I think it does, thank you.
Keith, I have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead, Mrs. Frank.
Okay. Becky or for Greg, in looking at this and hearing Kelly's question, were there some people that expected that instead of us voting the 40% reimbursement, which was for the last four months of the school year that the kids were doing the remote learning, were they expecting 100%? Is that, were there, were there some people that were requesting that or had a concern about it?
So I think that the few questions we had, so we, the reimbursement is from March 13th to the end of the school year, so what they would have paid in tuition, it's just reimbursement, it's 40% of that timeframe that we reimburse.
Right.
Some families, again, requested that we did 100% reimbursement. But again, I think the decision and the data presented to the school committee is that, you know, again, we have, we have expenses and commitments to faculty and staff. And those faculty and staff were still providing remote learning opportunities for all of our kindergartners to the best that they could in a remote environment.
And yeah, I agree because I, you know, we, those students in the kindergarten program, the full day kindergarten, were getting education in a building full day for six months, going from September to March. Okay, so I just need clarification because when I saw that screen and I saw Becky had the 100% and 40%, I just wanted to know and it, you know, and it's, it gives us a good visual. So I mean, thinking that this does have to come out of the operational budget where we're getting other hits on different things that, you know, we were not even accounting for and then have this hit, I would hate to think that we would have to go for a $76,000 hit. And plus, those, those full day kindergarten students were in session for six months.
It's, it's 100% Joan of, of the March through June. $76,000 would be from the March to June, not 100% from the beginning of the year. This is saying, we gave them a 40% refund from March to June. If we gave them 100% from March to June, that's $76,000. And so the people who, some of the people in the community who are upset are saying that they're not getting any extra kindergarten than the people who didn't pay anything. So they feel that they should get 100% reimbursement. But then that $76,000 has to come from somewhere else in our already expensed budget.
Okay, so then what they, so that's my misunderstanding. So the, thanks for the clarification. So they wanted 100% for the last four months of school when they weren't in session?
Exactly.
Okay.
So I will share that obviously, we did not enter this year predicting a pandemic. So this, this was unforeseen. We, you know, our budget projections, when we created the FY '20 budget, projected a certain amount in our operational budget and a certain amount from tuitions. I just want to remind the community that our goal is to move to a tuition-free kindergarten program. That way, issues like this are resolved very quickly. I will share that as we look to the fall, you know, I think with a little more predictability, if we open full time, that's great. But if we do, if we do move into a hybrid mode, looking at what the, what the fees would be for kindergarten and making sure that the fees are balanced with whatever the hybrid learning would look like.
Speaking of that, Greg, the, the feedback that I'm hearing is that people are saying that why bother paying then and signing up for full day if it's going to be a hybrid model? If it's anything less than full time, whatever. So I don't know how that's going to impact our budget also. If we have a bunch of kids now who, you know, we have the majority of kids are tuition and if that's going to flip to having none, I don't know how we are.
So I think, I think we, I'm confident that we'll, we'll return to some sense of normalcy next year. Whether it's in September, I don't know. You know, so I think we need to look beyond September. I think we will have a full day kindergarten program and giving some parents and families relief for that, you know, first month where maybe they're not in full time. So some tuition relief on that and then hopefully, we'll open up in, you know, full day K in October, November and so forth. And then we could start charging tuition. The challenge is we have faculty and staff. Again, our motto relies on, on some of the tuitions that we collect unfortunately right now. And the only way we could mitigate that is say, is to tell the community, we're only offering a half-day program throughout our four schools. I don't think that's the right thing to do. So the finance team and I are looking at that problem. Again, we're waiting for some guidance from the state. It's, we're gonna have to, time is right now our, our ally. We need to give some time so we have better data around what the fall reopening will look like.
Yes, I have a few things to add, if I may. The, the first thing I want to say is that it's not an easy time for the district or for families and that this decision, it's been much deliberated. In fact, it was debated at length in the last meeting for those who saw those deliberations. It's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy issue by any means. To build the program like this, we have a lot of expenses that we encumber on the front end. We have to front load, you know, for the staffing and the materials. And so unfortunately, it wasn't as simple as just, while you, while families pay tuition in a kind of consistent and linear, steady fashion throughout the year, we had to build the program and staff it and, and basically follow through on that because of how late in the year this happened. So Mrs. Gannett makes a fair point as well about what the numbers are going to look like in the fall, which is obviously, we can only do our so much to put a crystal ball on this. But it's, it's definitely something worth running the numbers on. So I'm glad to see Central District is, is thinking through a couple of scenarios, including the possibility of reduced enrollment and what that might do to our budget because I think we need to get ahead of that. So, but I also wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Mark Noe that with this, we don't, we don't want to backtrack so far in here that we, we, that we lose the foundation, the momentum we were trying to build on the, on the full day free, full day kindergarten program. I mean, that still remains the goal. It's one of our budget goals. Obviously, there are some challenges and things to navigate in the short midterm. But going back to just half-day would, would really be a significant slide backwards. So those are some of my thoughts on the matter.
Could I just a comment on two things? So obviously, in the FY '21, School Committee approved amended budget. It does include $100,000 shifting from tuition to operational. So that is helpful because in that budget proposal, we rely less on tuition. We continue marching toward having kindergarten solely be funded to the operational budget and no longer have tuitions be part of the equation. The second thing is, as a district, we're talking about really looking at Innesboro Connect 2.0 and what remote learning looks like. Although I think we did a good job, there is great room for improvement. Again, we did not enter into this academic year thinking that we were going to have to move to a full remote type of learning system. And part of the work that we're doing as a central office leadership team and as buildings is really looking into that parent feedback and really improving the remote learning piece so that if we do have to move into a hybrid mode or a full remote learning mode, it's a much more robust system for, for families.
Keith, I have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So when will we have a better idea of our kindergarten enrollments? Is it typically around this time of year or is it closer to the beginning of the next school year?
So right now, we do, and when we review our enrollment numbers, we, we have a pretty good sense of what our enrollment numbers are today. They are what we were expecting. However, over the summer, we typically see an influx of kindergarten enrollments. Last year, I think we saw 25 in the month of July and August. And I think we can assume that we'll see the same type of enrollment trends in kindergarten over this summer. So I believe, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but when we look at the enrollment data, I believe it's, it's approximately 150 kindergarters who are enrolled now.
Great, thank you.
Is that the projected one that you have? The projections for FY '21 on the, on the?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it says 155.
Yes, the 155, so.
So that's currently, we know 155.
Correct. So let me.
And, and NASDAQ says 177, so. And last year, we had 175, so.
Yep, so in FY '21, 155. And again, what we're seeing is that although we're seeing declining enrollment in our upper grade levels, the fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth, we are seeing an increase in enrollment in our early childhood programs, preschool, K1. So the other thing that we're really working on, and I'll have Mary Ellen Duggan, our wellness coordinator, speak to this, is the work around safety and reopening with the proper safety measures. And Mary Ellen and her team have been working diligently on preparing for the fall reopening. So Mary Ellen, if you can give a brief overview, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, first, we had to prepare to have the staff all come in. So we developed a training for them and checklist for them to make sure everybody that's coming into the buildings to. to pack up things and get their classrooms ready for the summer. Everybody was safe and following guidelines that are put forth. With Becky's help and some other people in central office, Keith and Nancy Bissett, we have been in search of PPE to keep everybody safe when we return in the fall because there will still be a need for masks. And in some of the younger classrooms, the teachers may need shields and gowns and whatnot. So we are procuring those supplies through vendors that the state has put forward to us. And Becky has been working diligently on that. I just keep telling her what I need and she keeps, and thermometers and there's going to be all kinds of guidelines. I don't know if you've all seen the early childhood and camp guidelines that recently came out. I think that's a kind of a sneak peek glimpse of what we're going to be looking at for the fall. So we're just getting ready.
I think one of, one of our approaches is to be proactive. So again, the work of Mary Ellen, leadership of Mary Ellen and Becky and Keith, not waiting to get those PPE in August, but doing that now. So, so that we're prepared and that our, again, our number one priority is going to be safety and making sure that we can open our doors and keep our students, faculty and staff, safe while in our buildings.
Keith, can I have a question through you to Mary Ellen?
Yes, please.
Mary Ellen, thank you for the update. And Becky, thank you also. My question is from Mary, from Mary Ellen, is you're talking about the gowns, the shields, the thermometers. So this is another extra expense that we not planned into the operational budget. I know you don't have an exact figure, but do you have an estimate of what the extra PPE is going to cost us?
I could guess it would be close to between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars.
For the entire year?
Becky probably, it would be between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars. But Becky has those figures, I'm sure, of what we've already placed the orders on and what's back ordered and we're waiting for.
So yeah, so we placed our first order actually this morning. And that includes three different types of masks, the face shields and the thermometers. And that was approximately ten thousand dollars, but that would be split across the three districts. So we're ordering for all three districts at once. Keith has been in search of hand sanitizer that we can equip our buildings with. We're only able to find the smaller bottles at this point in time. So that's something that we're continuing to explore. And then we're also going to be placing another order for gowns. And that is approximately four thousand dollars. Again, split across the three districts. So this is our initial order. Hopefully, the face shields last us for a while. And then, you know, we'll have to reevaluate, obviously. But we are purchasing in large quantities. But we are a large district also.
So the seventeen to twenty thousand, that's across all three districts?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Another question, Keith, may I have another question?
Please.
When you talk about the gowns, is that going to be for all the adults who'll be in the building? The office staff, teachers, cafeteria?
So the face shields, we did order one for every employee as an added layer of protection as needed. The gowns would be only, not everybody would need a gown. It would be, I would think, maybe preschool or maybe some of our sub-separate classrooms that we have and probably the nurses would need gowns.
Just a general comment that we are, the initial purchase is just to get us, to allow us to launch the school year. So it is not a year-long supply of materials. So it's, it's the first month, the first month and a half. So there will be additional expenditures in the area of safety and personal protection equipment.
I have a question, Keith.
Yes, please go ahead, Mrs. Miller.
So will teachers and students and staff be expected to be bringing their own masks to, into the buildings? Or is this order supposed to be for all of those people?
So masks, fabric masks are just as good as the surgical masks that we have. And they provide the same amount of protection. It depends on where we go with the mask. All employees are asked to bring their own mask as it's a requirement of the state. It's not a school requirement. So we do have the surgical masks in the event that they forget or if they need one. And then what's required of the students will all depend on what the guidelines are when we return.
Yeah, so the commissioner, one of his comments was that most likely schools would ask families to supply their children with a mask to bring to school. And then the school's responsibility would be if students forgot a mask or a mask broke, that we would, we would provide those masks to students who needed, needed one. But again, from the initial comments from the Commissioner of Education, it did not sound like the district would be responsible to provide every student with a mask. And if you think about the cost of providing every student with a mask, it's significant. We have across our ten schools, over a little under one thousand five hundred students. You know, even if a mask, single mask was fifteen cents, it's, it's a tremendous amount of money. It would be well over a half a million dollars to provide every student a single mask every day.
Keith, I have a question.
Yes, please go ahead, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. Greg, what about when we have substitute teachers coming in? Will there be, I'm sure you're going to have a supply of the gowns and the face masks for them. Will there be anything that will be a temperature check for them when they enter the building?
Well, actually, turn it over to Heather to answer that question.
So we, we do have a checklist that everybody entering the building will have to follow, asking about their current well-being. And so everybody who enters will be expected to do that, to follow that process.
We're also, Heather is also doing some recruiting of substitutes now. We're anticipating that we could require more subs than in a typical year. So we are trying to create a pool of substitutes that we can rely on consistently. As that's going to be part of our reopening equation if faculty and staff aren't able to come in for, for whatever reason.
So Heather, when you talk about these checklist for substitutes and whoever enters the building, would that also be for the parent volunteers? Or Greg, have you heard anything of what the commissioner or the governor is requesting for parent volunteers when they come in?
So we're waiting for those guidelines. I think that my, again, those guidelines outline, you know, which visitors are allowed to come to school and so forth. So we don't have the answers. But again, I, I would imagine that in, in the opening, that it'd be more restrictive than less restrictive. But again, we're waiting for some guidance from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, I have one more question.
Yes, please go ahead, Mrs. Billy Johnson.
In terms of either students or faculty, staff who are immunocompromised or who have other health concerns, have you had any discussions about the plans for those individuals?
Sure, Mary Ellen?
Sure, yes, we have. So with Heather, any staff member? As you know, they've come into the school this past week to help pack up things. And they're coming in this week and next week to clean. So if the staff members had any, were in any high-risk category or any concerns, they let their principal know and let Heather know. And we worked with them. Some were able to be the first person and the only person in the building for the first hour of the day, whatever accommodations needed to be made so that they could do what they needed to do. But I'm sure the rest of it would be HR related.
So I also think we are looking at students who are, you know, who are compromised and making sure again that we're working closely with families and having, again, the proper safety measures in the PPE. So we can support those students returning safely.
Thank you.
So now I'm going to actually turn it over to.
Keith, quickly, sorry, Greg.
Yes, actually, I have a couple of questions about the same topic before we shift. Go ahead, Mrs. Gannett.
Do you, I, my topic goes back to like what we originally were talking about, about the survey. So if you want to stay on topic and then I can go back, it's up to you.
Oh, go ahead, before we get further, sure.
Okay, so my quick question was the two options that were presented. And I've spoke to you about it before, you know, it's not conducive to necessarily working families and things like that. Are those the only options that are being considered? Or are you just feeling out these two options and then you'll potentially come up with another one? Basically, waiting until we get more guidance from the?
Yeah, so I think there, so if we move into a hybrid approach, there are a lot of different scenarios. There's so many different variations of a hybrid approach. The two solutions that we presented families with were solutions that we, the, you know, school reopening advisory panel thought were potentially viable. And we wanted to hear from the community. So again, you know, what would work for a family, you know, to work comparing parents where there's a hybrid model? So we're really going to be looking closely at the feedback and seeing if there's an idea that we're not thinking about. But I guess one of the, one new piece of information is I don't think we're going to have a lot of choice. I think, again, my, based on what I'm hearing from the commissioner, that it'll be very prescriptive that all schools across the Commonwealth, if we are required to move forward with a hybrid model, will have to use the same model.
Okay.
In my, in my current thinking, and again, I don't have a crystal ball, my current thinking is that, and the commissioner mentioned this several times, would be a week one, week two model. Where students would spend, you know, week one in school. And then the other cohort would be remote and then they'd switch the next week.
Nice and easy, right, Mr. Martino? No big deal?
No, I think that one parent emailed me and said, you know, basically, sure, there are no good options when it comes to a hybrid approach. And she's exactly right. Everyone has different working conditions, different family situations. And a hybrid approach is, is not ideal for most of our families. So we're trying to get as much input and feedback as we can and come up with the best possible solution with the understanding it's not going to be perfect by any means.
If I may, a couple, on the, on the same topic before we shift further down the line. The, thank you, everybody, for, for sharing the updates on the health and wellness and, and safety. The one, one word I heard was backordered. I think Becky mentioned it. So my question is, is there any concern that these supplies won't materialize in time for a startup school? Do we need any backup plans? If, if, if someone could speak a bit more to that. And similarly, same, kind of same topic. And, and maybe this is more for Keith to reply to, but the, the lack of hand sanitizer, the difficulty finding it, should say. This is perhaps more of a suggestion, but my office had some difficulty and recently obtained some from some local distilleries and wineries that are making. It's not Purell, it's, it's more watery and, or some of it's also just liquid where you spray it. But I just want to put that out there. But in particular, backordered supplies and what, what risk are we running there as far as getting what we need? And whether perhaps there's any surge pricing due to demand? So I don't know if that's best for Becky.
Keith, if you want to follow up on that, hand sanitizer. And Becky, you can talk about supplies.
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the hand sanitizer. You know, Keith, you're, you're absolutely right. The dispensers that we have in the schools right now are proprietary, whether they are for Purell or Kimberly Clark or whatever other distributor had them. And so those are in very high demand. There are other alternatives and those are the things we're exploring right now. Whether it is in bulk, whether it is, you know, just individual units like you would have in your home. Just looking at all the different options, what we're finding though, is that there are more and more options that are popping up. We're just trying to pick the right lane. So we are connecting with a couple of different vendors. There are options. I haven't heard the distillery yet. I don't know if that breaks any school rules or not. But I, I think we're in a good position where we would be able to procure some type of hand sanitizer for the start of the year. And Becky, do you want to talk about the backordering? And then I'll follow up with some of the stuff that I have.
One general comment, Keith, and that is, you know, Keith and I had a conversation today. And one of the things he brought up was that we can't store large volumes of hand sanitizer in buildings because it's considered a hazardous material or flammable material. So those are the types of issues that we're trying to address that we have not faced in the past around having so much hand sanitizer that it's considered a risk to keep in our schools.
Yeah, and in doing the research with the various companies that we've reached out to on the hand sanitizer, we are able to get a supply. It's just not the preferable method. So there, there is an option right now for us to purchase, in, I think there's sixteen ounce bottles in bulk where we could have a supply to start the school year. And I think Keith had also mentioned that many of our schools already has, have supplies on hand that were purchased prior to this epidemic even occurring. So we do have enough to start the school year. It's just making sure that we can find the product that we really need in our school. And that is, you know, an appropriate use for the dispensers that we have right now. So we do have contingency plans. It's just, you know, trying to get to that more preferable method.
And typically, over the course of the year, with the dispensers that we already have in place, we'd be talking about one to two cases per district that we would need. And we know that that is not going to be what the, the new normal will, will be when we roll forward. So we're trying to plan for that and looking at all the different options. But I think before we made today's order, we weren't really, we weren't really confident that we had the best option available. And that's why we're continuing our research on hand sanitizer.
And I think doing this too in June, you know, it gives us a little bit of a leg up as well where we can continue to do the research. You know, we can get some supplies, but we can continue to research for the school year.
And Becky, we did have confidence that the things that we did order today would be available because the vendor indicated that the items were in stock. Is that correct? I didn't want to misspeak to that.
Yeah, that's correct.
I think the only thing that we can't find right now would be the N ninety-fives that the nurses would need.
No, we ordered those.
Oh, all right.
We got you one hundred.
I would say in addition to that, the other things, it's kind of a similar thread around the sanitation is we are looking to electrostatic foggers for the, for the classrooms and more, for the buildings. That would help with the sanitation of high-traffic areas. And we are in the process of procuring those, you know, for all three districts and making sure that we have enough supply to handle the high-traffic areas on a routine basis. So these are all the types of things we're exploring. Those items are right now on, on backorder, but we did place an order like for the region back in March and we are expecting it in the weeks to come. And our original vendor is also indicating we're about a two-month lead. So I think we'll be okay to start the year and then we will definitely have those supplies, you know, coming in as, as needed.
What about sanitizing wipes and sprays for hard surfaces? Those have been pretty challenging as well. Is that something that you're finding is available?
It is, that, that's one of the things that our vendors have been commenting on is those particular types of products, especially the sprays are, are available. Wipes, the ones that we get for our homes are not. And we are trying to explore other alternatives. I know Mary Ellen went on a crusade for a while to track down as many as possible and we were somewhat successful. So the wipes, I think, have also been in a little bit of limbo land when it comes to availability. Is that correct, Mary Ellen?
It is. The wipes, I think that all the teachers have the spray that, that they would need in their classroom. supplied by the custodial staff, that they have the sprays that they need to clean and disinfect things. The wipes are just a convenience really that we'd be looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Keith.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, you talked about the foggers. Are those similar to what they have shown that they possibly will be using on airplanes? Is that the fogger that you're talking about?
That is correct.
So how many foggers will there be in the schools?
Well, we're hoping to get a, a couple of backpacks which have just better range and better longevity. But we're also looking at handheld battery operated devices. And the hope is to have one in each school so that they could do daily, if not multiple times a day, the high traffic areas, that's the intent for those devices.
Okay, and then a second question. Thinking about the buses, we're talking about the buildings, but getting the kids to the building from home. Is it the bus company's responsibility to take care of the sanitizing? Or can we make, can we make requirements to the bus company or how does that go?
My, my understanding is that there is going to be guidance that also comes out for school transportation. Our, our bus contractor is part of the task force, a couple of task forces, I believe. And so my hope is that we would be on the, on the cutting edge of whatever guidance is coming. I also am predicting that I am going to be having a, an ongoing conversation with the bus company over the summer about what their protocols are and make sure they're matching what we're expecting. You know, and also if we do go to an A B model, that also reduces the number of students that would be on a bus on a time, which does help. But still, there are a lot of unanswered questions related to transportation that we have to resolve.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Keith, one more thing, sorry.
Go ahead, Percy.
Another thing people were asking about was if there is an alternate, like an A B model type thing. Is that going to be done by grade buys? Or like are siblings going to be allowed to be with siblings or how is that going to work? That was the other thing that just popped in my head.
Yeah, there are so many details that we need to work out. Identifying the cohort models. We don't have those answers yet, we are doing some preliminary thinking. Obviously, we'd want to keep siblings together, you know. So if a family has three children across three different schools, they're not navigating A B weeks and so forth. There are a lot of details that need to be worked out, whatever hybrid model. And again, we're waiting for some guidance. We're doing a lot of preliminary thinking and talking and discussing, so we have a direction. But we won't have to share that direction until we get the guidelines from the state.
Greg, has the commissioner or the governor given you a tentative date? When they would give you this hybrid model? Because it seems like there's a lot, just what Kelly brought up is, it involves even the placement of kids. If families want kids to be on the same schedule, maybe in different grades. So has the governor given you, maybe by this date, by, you know, July 30th, we'll have it all set?
So not a specific date, just a window of time and that's mid, mid June. So again, I think that, I just want to emphasize that we are doing a lot of these conversations and thinking within our district to be proactive, so that when we do get the guidelines, we've done much of the work and it's just a matter of choosing the pathway that we have to take. But we're thinking about every detail from, you know, how do we create these cohorts that, that are in the best interest of our families? How do we create cohorts? You know, so that it supports the learning of students. We're thinking about spaces and utilization of spaces. We're thinking about lunch, how do we, you know, how we provide lunches to, to our students. We're thinking about safety and specials. There are just numerous details that we're sorting through. And the more you start thinking about the details, there are more questions than answers. But I'm confident that as we move forward, we'll, we'll get to a good place. And again, I just can't emphasize enough that, that the data from the survey is so invaluable to us. Because at least provides us some insight into what families are thinking about. And then I just want to also comment that our student support services team is also working on thinking about extended school year. And unfortunately, they have not yet received guidance from DESI either. At this point, we're hoping tomorrow potentially. So a lot of, a lot of the answers is a balancing act between being proactive and trying to seek the answers and, and make, take a direction, a decision around direction. While also being mindful that at the state level, there's some guidelines that are coming out as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
I'd just like to thank Greg and his whole administrative team. I hate to leave anybody out, I'd love to mention all your personal names, but I, I would be remiss if I forgot somebody. I would just like to say this whole dialogue that has happened right now from a question that I asked about, you know, okay, how much is it going to cost for the gowns and the shields? We've learned so much information and even the responses, even with Mary Ellen asking about the mask and Becky goes, oh, they were ordered today, 100 were already ordered. And we're not even done with this current school year. And yet you guys are being so proactive and this is such, I, I'm just amazed because this is such a unsettling time, but to know that you are already on the forefront and you're thinking about where you store the materials, the hand sanitizers, because they are hazardous materials, how many can we do? And the foggers, everything, and what you have ordered already, just to get you ready for school. And to know that we're on the forefront, the order is in, is going to give us a lot of time. And, and you've looked out for the safety of each, every employee and student in that district. And I'm totally amazed. I am so thankful that we have all of you that are leading this district and all the three districts. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate it as a former educator, thank you.
Well said, Joan, I, I agree, go ahead.
So I just, I just want to also, to Kelly's question, we're, you know, we're committed to giving our families as much information as soon as we can, so that they can make plans and make adjustments. And again, our hope is that we can open in some sort of normal fashion in the fall, that would be ideal. That is our greatest hope. And these hybrid models or remote learning are really contingency plans if we have to shift directions. But our, our commitment is to the families and trying to make this work as best we can. With the understanding that it's almost impossible to meet everyone's needs if, if we do go into a hybrid model.
Thank you.
I have one, before we, just one, hate to drag us back into the weeds, but a significant asset for the district is technology, which I understand is still in use and has not been recouped yet. I just was curious if we could get any updates on the plans for.
They just got an email today about that, actually.
We are, based on what we're hearing.
I have devices.
Based on what we're hearing, we have decided not to collect the devices over the summer. In anticipation that there is the possibility that we would go into remote, a hybrid or remote learning. And it does not make sense for us to collect everything and then have to go through the process of redistributing. Julie Doyle and her technology team is also looking at moving to a true one to one environment in the fall. Again, for a couple of reasons, one, for safety, so, you know, we're not sharing devices between students. And then two, you know, for flexibility, if we have to, let's say we were allowed to come back full time. And then there's an uptick in the COVID-19 virus in our school and we have to shut down. We want to be able to quickly build a ship for one to one remote learning in line. So that planning is underway and Julie will be providing more details in, in the weeks and months to come about that.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, one chairman a question on technology. Greg, what would happen if one of the devices that a family has is not working or a program needs to be updated? Is there a provision where they can drop it off over the summer to get it repaired?
Yeah, so, you know, Keith, Julie and the tech team is working on kind of a tech center where people can come and drop off their, their devices and get them repaired. Keith, I don't know if you want to speak to kind of the think, some of the thinking that we're doing around that topic.
Yeah, that's, that's right, Greg, you know, there's a variety of different things. Some, you know, some families do not want to have the device anymore. You know, and they've, they've reached out. So Julie and I are assessing it, whether we're just going to do maybe a, a drop off day or two. And then we're also thinking, like Greg said, about moving forward, about whether or not we're going to have to have tech teams available for, you know, devices to be dropped off if we have to continue with remote learning. And I think we're assessing all of that at this point. The decision to have people, you know, keep devices is that there was really no need for us to bring them back. We did evaluate whether or not we would need to update them or reimage them or do any of that type of maintenance. And it was determined that that wasn't necessary. So we really now are, instead of focusing on the collection, we're thinking of how we're going to maintain, move forward and, and eventually and move to a one to one en, environment for all of our students. But there's a lot of questions with that, you know, that, that's very preliminary. And we're just thinking about the options that are available and the roadblocks that we would have to deal with to, in order to make that happen. So technology, you're right, Keith, is, is going to be very important regardless of whether or not we're back full time, fully remote or hybrid. And we're evaluating all the options at this point.
Thank you, I think Kelly Gannett had a question at the same time as Joan Frank.
It was just a quick thing about, um, should have written it down.
I talked too long, sorry.
I know, no, 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 I got it, I got it, I knew it would come back. So, and, and Greg kind of touched upon it in the beginning about the platform in the 2.0. I did happen to, MASC had a webinar yesterday about, all my different notes, best practice for remote learning. And, sorry about that. And one of the things that they were saying is having a universal platform like, and the example that they're using is they're using Canvas and how, and they're doing it K through 12. And this is out in the Berkshires. And they're doing it K through 12 and every classroom is doing it and using it in every school. And, and they're regional also and, and how much, you know, it's, it's really, it's the best practice for, with remote learning. And I would just, I know we're, you were talking about getting the new program and new thing over, but I didn't, does that, that doesn't replace Canvas though, or does it?
You know, so actually, I'm going to have Stephanie speak to this, she's, she's taking the lead on, on this work. Stephanie, do you want to chime in?
Kelly, can you repeat that, just the last part of it?
Um, so it, it was basically for the Canvas. I know we have Canvas, does it do the high school too? I know it's middle school through a high school. We don't really do it K through five, in Northborough at least, I'm not sure what's in Southborough. So is, are we sticking with Canvas or is that new system that Julie's been working on upgrading? Are those the same thing or are they separate?
No, Power School, okay, now I understand. So Canvas is, is our learning platform. And it's in the middle schools and the high schools and we are sticking with it. And then Power School is our information system that we're moving to. And so they have separate functions, there are ways that they can interface, but they're separate. So Canvas we're sticking with and we are doing some work.
Yeah, so is there any look at to bringing that, the K through five and not just the middle school and up?
So, so we're, so we're doing, so we're doing some work to look at how we're using learning platforms K through 12. And right now, in the earlier grades, we have Seesaw and Google Classroom that are being used by teachers in different schools in Northborough. And right now Julie and I are working with teachers and principals to look at the successes and the challenges of those two platforms and to make decisions along with Greg and the rest of the team to say, how can we get greater consistency of how we're using learning platforms across the system? But it would not be about moving Canvas down to the younger grades because it wouldn't be appropriate at the younger grades. It would be about figuring out with Google Classroom and Seesaw, which we already have, what are the best options for particular grades? Does that answer the question?
I think we're very fortunate as a district that we have some really great learning management systems. You know, we have Canvas, Google and then, you know, Seesaw. And I think it's not that, it's not about what tools, it's how we're using them and bringing consistency to how they're being used in, in the classroom. And, you know, a lot of the feedback from the parent survey was that it's just information overload. If you, if your son or daughter has five different courses, those, those courses or classes could be set up very differently by those five different teachers. Therefore making it very confusing. So we're looking at trying to bring, bring some continuity and some consistency in the way courses are structured. So that when students move in and out of courses or teachers, it's, it's common, it's, it's familiar to them. And that's the same with Seesaw as well as Google Classroom.
Can I just ask one clarifying question? Power School is basically for, I know it's a student, for student records and student information, that, that's for grades, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Marie, I'm not sure if you want to give a brief update on E S Y.
Oh, I can, you, you started it. And what we're doing right now is we're planning for remote. And once we get additional guidance, we will, we're also planning for limited face to face instruction during the summer. We have sent out a survey to our parents, I believe Helene Desjardins sent that out yesterday, to ask them if E S Y is remote, will they participate? And if we do end up going to face to face, will they participate? And she's gathering that information now. We have a call with Russell Johnston on Friday, Department of Ed. And we will get further information and I'm hopeful we'll get some real information this time about where we are going as far as the guidelines going forward. That said, it also cycles back to what Mary Ellen said about safety and having PPE for staff and it, and transportation. And there's just, there's a lot to, to think about. But we are moving forward with our plans and we're planning for the contingency as well as the remote learning. We're looking at beefing up the remote learning as well as Greg had mentioned.
And I just want to echo Joan's comments around, on all the great work that the central office leadership team is doing. It truly is a team effort. Everyone is, is part of that team and doing their work and working well with one another. So although it's been incredibly challenging, it's also been incredibly rewarding because it, it is a great team. So I just want to thank all the directors and central office staff, you know, for their work around, you know, day to day from March 13th to today, to, to also for the work they're doing, looking into the future.
Mr. Chair, have a question for Marie, through you.
Yes, please.
Marie, how are you doing in, in this remote learning situation? How are, how is preschool assessments being done?
Preschool assessments, we are using the early intervention information and talking with that staff. And for those that we can move ahead with as far as assessing students, we are doing that.
Okay, because I, I guess I meant preschool screening, I mean, because you usually do that in a one to one. So you do have a vehicle that you can remotely see these students and then assess them, is that what it is?
No, no. What, what we're doing is early intervention, we partner with early intervention to take a look. So Jennifer Henry, our, our administrator. our administrator for the preschool is also doing interviews with parents over Zoom or over the phone and gathering as much information as she can. And it's it's really difficult without a student coming in to do the actual screening and remote screening is really limited to interviews at this point.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Joan, one thing we are doing is moving our kindergarten screening to the beginning of the year. Typically, you know, we would have been engaged in kindergarten screening in our four schools already. But that work will be pushed to the opening of the school year.
So does that mean that there'll be shuffling of classrooms, too?
So we're waiting for.
The guidance.
Essentially, we're we're going to do the best we can creating classes, but we are waiting for the guidelines to see what that looks like. But potentially, there could be some shuffling of classes based on some of the screening results.
And are there any E L L screenings that occur in the summer months that need to be accounted for?
Rhoda, do you want to talk about our L population?
So what we're doing right now that E L D teachers, just like Marie explained with preschool, we're doing our family interviews to learn about our families that speak an additional language. We can't actually screen the students for language proficiency, but we're getting to know the families as much as we can remotely. And we will be doing that in September or when we can reconvene at the beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question for Marie.
Yes, please.
Marie, I have a question about students that were in the process of being evaluated or being placed potentially on an I E P or if even if a parent requested that. So I would assume that there are some that are still in the pipeline, as you could say. Do you, how do you see to take care of that coming into? If, you know, we go back to school in September, would you expect to see a heavy concentration on getting those screenings done as you would in kindergarten? Or or do you think that you have a good hold of any evaluations that came in? And their kids are maybe getting partial services?
So yes, to both of those. We have a combination of timelines for initial evaluations. The reevaluations for students are going forward with the information that we have, and we're writing partial I E Ps in some cases. For those for reevaluations, for those students who really do need some of the testing redone, then that piece is waiting until the fall. But there are some students that have gone through the reevaluation process during this time because all the testing has already been done, but they hadn't had a chance to have their meetings. That's another scenario. So we are working on that. The only one, the initial evaluations are the ones that are difficult because we haven't had a history of any information on a student in terms of assessment data. So those are put on hold, except for the ones that were in process that we have been able to do some of the evaluations prior to closure. Those will also ramp up in the fall. So we are putting together a plan to get our school psychologists and our educators in place so that we catch up with those in the pipeline for those that we can't do. And we also are have a spreadsheet where we're tracking all of that. How many are in the backlog? How many have we completed? And we're really, we've really done quite a few. We've done over 150 annual I E Ps in this time of closure. We've had all of those team meetings. We do have a little bit of a backlog and we're keeping track of that as well. But really, it's based on parent opting in or out of having annual meetings as well. So there's reevals, there's initials, and there's annuals. We are working on all of them. We do expect a backlog and we do, we are putting a plan in place to address those when we come back to school.
Okay, is that 150 that the number that you gave, is that K to eight or K to five?
That is K to eight, and that's both Northborough and Southborough combined.
My hat's off again. I'll tell you, guys haven't stopped and you still have allowed and students are always there at the foremost. So thank you very much. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other? Looks like we're still in Q and A. Any other members have any questions for the panel? I can, we can let Greg wrap up this section, or if he has somebody else, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're everyone gave their updates. So so thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have some more new business than moving along.
So we have.
Next item would be legislative update.
So two legislative updates. The first is the Massachusetts Division of School Committee's resolution for the Every Student Succeed Act. This is a letter that I will be sharing with members through DocuSign. And basically, it's a request to fully support the Every Student Succeeds Act and specifically Chapter 70 money. Again, the governor's budget is being, it's being reworked. We're waiting for data from the state around what our Chapter 70 numbers would look like. And as part of that equation, we're hoping to see some additional funding through, again, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And the letter just shows a committee support for that that type of funding. The second is the CARES Act, again, funding to support the pandemic. We talked a lot about purchases that we were not anticipating. We have received our allocation for the CARES Act, and it's based on a percentage of our Title I funding. So the letter that I'm going to share with you is about making sure that the funding is conducted or distributed in an equitable manner across the state. And basically, we feel like the current funding formula is not necessarily equitable. You know, I think using our Title $1 to determine how much we need is not an accurate way to determine how much our district needs in terms of the CARES Act. So again, the letter advocates for looking at alternative funding mechanisms for dollars around supporting the pandemic and specifically purchasing equipment such as P P E. And that is my legislative update.
Any questions from my colleagues about legislative updates? Moving right along, that brings us to the ratification of the agreement with the Northborough Custodians. Mr. Martin, if you wouldn't mind putting up the verbiage there.
Sure. So I just want to share with the committee that we're we're pleased to share with the community that we have an agreement with the Northborough Custodians. We are very fortunate to have a very dedicated team of custodians who keep our facilities well maintained and safe for our students. We have an outstanding partnership with our custodians. The negotiations went very, very well, very smoothly. And I just can't emphasize enough the great work that they do. And also, you know, what they're going to be asked to do in the fall in terms of all of these additional safety precautions and cleaning precautions, and they're fully on board and very supportive of it. So the agreement that we have come to really is a fair compensation package. It is a one year, one year contract from fiscal year 21 to 22 with the understanding that the economic outlook is very difficult to predict right now. And that it was in all of our best interest to do a one year contract and then meet again later in the fall, early winter to talk about negotiations for future contracts. And lastly, I just want to thank Heather Richards for her leadership in this area. She's she led a lot of this work and really did an outstanding job.
Thank you. And on behalf of the school committee, I fairly confidently speak for for all of us that we echo your appreciation and all the collaboration through the bargaining collective bargaining process and duly recognize that they're going to be asked to be quite flexible and critical on safe reopening of the schools when that does occur. So we appreciate that as well.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Northborough School Committee and the Northborough School Custodians from fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table by Mrs. Bailey Jones and seconded by Mrs. Frank. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I will reiterate what it is in light of the fact that it's the bargain contract. So we have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Northborough School Committee and the Northborough School Custodians from fiscal year 2021 to the fiscal year 2020, 2022, excuse me. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle. Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us all the way down to old business and there is none, which thus then brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee.
So just we briefly spoke about, briefly spoke about enrollment, and we are monitoring enrollment very closely. At this this time of year, we're looking at our class size policy and making sure that our classes are aligned with that policy. The central office, through Keith Avoye and Jean Pinto and Nancy Bissett, we are creating our waiting lists for those capped classrooms. And what you can see in in the MOB is our classrooms that are at cap. And we are monitoring it very closely. And also, we are monitoring kindergarten enrollment very closely. Again, to see what type of staffing levels will be required as we open up in the fall. At this time, we are, there are not any significant variances in enrollment. There are not any significant outliers of class sizes. And we're very comfortable with where a class size and enrollment looks for the fall of of 2021.
Yes, please.
I have a question. Maybe I'm missing it. When I'm looking at the enrollment sheet, the color coded, the difference between the yellow and the peach colored.
So this is, the yellow is this current year, 1920. And the projections is in below that is projections for FY21.
The ones that are capped, Joan.
Yeah.
The ones that are capped. Okay.
So this FY21 and this call, this row is FY9, FY20.
Okay. All right, thanks. I was just looking for a key and I thought, but thank you for the designation. I appreciate it.
So also in your packet is the FY20 monthly general fund expenditure report. You know, I'll have Becky briefly give an update on the expenditure report. And we will need a vote to approve until audited after she gets her report.
So included in your packet, as Greg said, is the monthly general fund report for the time period ending May 31st, 2020. The FY20 budget has $418,178 remaining on the bottom line or 1.68%. The finance team has been working very closely with district administrators and principals and administrative assistants to close out any outstanding invoices and purchase orders. And we are also keeping an eye to FY21 in terms of making purchases for P P Es, working with students' court services to identify any tuitions that could potentially be prepaid as allowed by Mass General law and also working with schools to make sure that they have what they need in order to reopen their doors hopefully on day one.
Very good. Thank you. I will be seeking a vote to approve until audited for this expenditure report. Yes, please.
I move that we approve until audited the Northborough Public School District FY2020 budget, the monthly general fund expenditure report as of May 31st, 2020.
I second.
The motion is seconded by Mrs. Bailey Jones. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Again, the motion is to approve until audited the FY20 monthly general fund expenditure report as presented. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And yes, for me, Keith LaBelle, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great. Next in your packet is the FY21 budget calendar. Typically, at this time of the year in June, we usually don't have this as an item on our agenda. This year is different in many ways. Two important upcoming meetings. The first is actually tomorrow evening, June 4th. Typically, in December, Town Administrator John Kader gives his financial trend monitoring report, which basically presents the financial trends of the community to all the boards and committees so that we're entering the budget season on the same page. Tomorrow evening's joint committee meeting with all the town boards is to give the committees an update on the town's financial outlook based on the current pandemic and what some of the projection changes are. So that as we move into town meeting, the boards and the committees are on the same page in terms of information. So that is tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock and you should have received a Zoom invite from me. If not, I will send out again tomorrow morning. And the second very important meeting is the annual town meeting, which is scheduled, I believe, for June 22nd at 7:00 PM. And the details of where that will be held will be released shortly from Town Administrator John Kader. And we're very hopeful that we'll be able to move forward with the town meeting. Also, in your in your packet is the FY21 School Committee approved amended budget. And at the last May meeting, the school committee did vote to amend the budget from 3.15% budget to a 1%. And again, that was very difficult to do from the principals, from teachers to the leadership team to determine what those reductions would be. But I think we we accomplished that work again by trying to keep students first in mind and making sure we're not impacting their experience. And then secondly, trying not to impact faculty and staff and and making sure we're maintaining programs. So again, in your packet is the School Committee approved amended budget. And that is my report to the committee this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Greg on any of those points? Any discussion? Hearing none, that brings us to, for those following along, there is no educational policy this evening, nor do we have any policy development and or distribution, which then brings us to audience sharing. Obviously, the audience is just us here, but if anybody has anything else they'd like to share?
Keith?
Yes, Miss.
Because we don't have any audience. Greg, did people send in questions ahead of time or statements or something?
Again, I apologize, you know, I apologize to the community for not.
Yeah, I know. I'm I'm hearing about it all. Like, everybody's like, apparently, everybody's in an uproar, thinking we're violation of open meeting laws, even though we have disclaimed in the beginning that we tried every best disclaimed in the beginning that we tried every best effort to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think the emergency order allows us to conduct our meetings. And as soon as this meeting is over, we will post this meeting so people can, can view it. The questions that I did receive were more around the hybrid model, what that looks like, and have we thought about certain ideas and certain scenarios? So very general. And then, the other questions I received were about kindergarten. And, you know, basically, where, you know, where does the tuition go? And what does that support in terms of the operational budget and staffing? And I believe those were the two areas that I received questions around. The other questions that I have received were around start time. So there's a start time survey right now that is open until this Friday. So again, I'm waiting for that survey to close, to get feedback and comments and, and questions from, from that survey that we will present at a combined meeting on June 24th to the three committees, Northborough, Southborough, and the region.
Okay. Any other audience sharing?
Yeah, Keith, I'd just like to share. So I'd just like to thank everyone, especially many people who are on this call right now are, you know, in their first year on the job in their specific roles. So thank you, Rhoda, for your year as the interim assistant superintendent. I mean, I know we have a combined meeting to say goodbye, but just wanted to thank you from the Northborough Committee. And Mary Ellen, for all of your work this year. What a year it's been. To Keith for joining us and for Becky. I think this is your first year in, in your current role, so thank you so much. Welcome, Stephanie. And I wish our principals were here tonight, but I really want to thank our principals for all of their leadership and for really just sort of leading their schools in this remote learning endeavor. So, yeah, that's my soapbox. Thank you, everyone, because this is a really challenging time. But I think that all of your leadership has really made it a smooth ride. So thank you.
Well.
I'll, I'll add Heather with all her collective bargaining and IBB prowess that she brought to the table this year, which has been critical and very helpful. And Marie Allen, she's not new. She's used to this, but as we heard earlier, she's, she's plugging away in the background there, making sure the wheels keep turning and the students get what they need, and the staff is supported. So we appreciate that.
We can't forget Greg, too. First year as superintendent.
The commonality.
Part of the job.
The, the commonality we have is this is our first pandemic as a team, so.
There you go.
Well said.
Mrs. Frank? Go ahead.
I said, well said, Lauren and Keith. You know, as we were talking and seeing everybody's face on the Zoom, I was thinking, wow, what a year. And as Lauren eloquently stated, all the new positions people have had through the year. And so glad Rhoda is still going to be with us, and I'm just so proud of that administrative team. And I, I knew that Greg had got a team together for this COVID-19 into reopening the schools. And I think that was, we got the email about two weeks ago, and I can't believe the progress so far in thinking about the, the school year that all of you guys have done. So I know it's numerous times and some late nights that you've been doing and early mornings to get all of this done. So hats off to all of you, and thank you from all of us, and very well said by all committee members.
So can I share something? I'll just share that I'm looking forward to a time when we return to normal and when, when audience sharing doesn't get disrupted by a glitch or technical issue. So I think a lot of everything that we do is, is so much more difficult because of the current situation. And I just, I'm looking forward to seeing the students walk through the school door, seeing our teachers, seeing our parents, and getting back to the important face-to-face work that we do. And, and I'm confident and hopeful that in the fall, we'll have some, we'll be able to return to some sense of normalcy. If it's not in September, hopefully October and November as soon as possible.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I would also like to thank Susan. I know that she's not here tonight, but I, we didn't get to formally thank her at our last meeting. So I believe that she's been a school committee member for six years.
I don't know the number.
Yeah, I believe she said six years. Yeah, so I just want to thank Susan for all of her leadership. And I wish that she was here tonight just to, to hear our thanks.
I'll second that. That's great. Yeah, she was a vital and very involved member. And her expertise that she gave to us was invaluable.
So as, as customary, we have a certificate from, signed from our legislators just acknowledging the service to the community. So I do have that for Susan, and I also have two gifts, our, our traditional gifts that we give people who are leaving our organization. That is a golden apple, or an apple, and a crystal, a clock and a crystal apple. So I'll be sharing those gifts with Susan. And I, again, echo the remarks that I feel very fortunate as a superintendent to have had the opportunity to, to work with, with Susan over the years.
Yes, I also concur, and I want everybody to know that she spent her weekend working on Mr. Martino's compiling comments and data for Mr. Martino's superintendent evaluation in preparation for the combined meeting. So she did not leave me high and dry as, in my role to step up in her absence. So I kind of think it speaks to her character that she worked the weekend and even met with us after her official resignation date to do a proper handoff of, of her duties and the information that she had. So we all appreciate that immensely. Okay. Any other audience sharing? That brings us to personnel items, distribution of personnel reports.
So just a, a quick update. We have hired a replacement for Mr. Tom Mader. We were hoping Mr. Mader could come to our March meeting, so we could acknowledge his retirement, great work and service for the district. As soon as we're able to meet in person, I will invite Mr. Mader to come in and be recognized by the committee. But Mr. Lavoie has convened a hiring committee and has made an appointment. Keith, I'm not sure if you want to speak to this briefly.
Absolutely. Charles Bud Richardson, who has been in with our district for some time now. He started his work with us at Algonquin and recently moved over to Northborough Public Schools for the last couple of years, has been appointed the facilities manager for the Northborough Public Schools. And it didn't take long. I think he signed his papers on Friday, and we started him on Monday because there was so much work to do. Actual first day was the, that the students were back to their full shifts. So he got back into it right away and has been incredibly valuable for the past couple of weeks on helping a variety of issues of getting, getting the faculty back into the buildings, to preparing the buildings for that, and also looking at those things that we're going to be able to do this summer. He has a breadth of knowledge when it comes to the mechanics of all the buildings, which really, really is helpful. And I know that he's going to do an awesome job leading us to an opening for our five buildings in Northborough, and he's been a great partner so far. So I'm continuing to look forward to working with him on all the projects that are ahead of us. And we're off to a good start.
And where was he, where has he been the past few years, you said, in the K38?
He, he has worked beside Tom, you know, Mader and a lot of maintenance stuff, bouncing to a couple of the buildings, kind of hubbed out of Melican, but being available to jump in when needed in the other schools.
Great.
He also has worked at the regional school district.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm sure we'll get an opportunity to speak at length about Mr. Mader, but we'd like to take you up on that offer, Greg, to make sure we have an opportunity to properly thank and celebrate his years of above and beyond dedicated service, and he left some big shoes to fill. One quick anecdote is from the capital planning meeting in November of 19. His, his resourcefulness, you know, he's telling us stories about finding things on eBay and parts and doing so much with so little and knowing the buildings inside out and upside down and being able to speak to the contractors and the materials. And it's just, it's, it's, it was a wealth of, of knowledge and experience. So certainly, I'm glad to, to see that we were able to, to hire from within so that we can kind of try and maintain some of, some of that, you know, kind of that culture and that knowledge, that kind of wealth of knowledge within the district. So thank you very much.
So then we also have a retirement, Martha Begala, who's a special education aide in a crossing guard practice school. So she is retiring, so we need to wish Martha well. And then a resignation, Jennifer Henry, who is, was our district-wide BCBA, who is now our early childhood administrator for the communities of North and South. So although she resigned from her BCBA work, she is still working as our early childhood administrator, is doing a fabulous job. So and that is the personnel report.
Excellent. Thank you. Communications. Any communications coming from, I don't have any coming off of my desk? Hearing none. Mr. Martino, did you have any, or perhaps the Sue Lawrence, we already took care of that. That was going to be a communication.
We are good.
Okay. And that brings us then to future agenda items, election of officers. So that's on future after elections.
A question for that, after elections, stuff like that, how do we? Do, Greg, Keith, do you have an interest in?
You're doing so well, Keith. I mean, you're just doing such a great job tonight, and.
It's very kind. I do.
I know, I know your hesitation with work schedule, but.
Or put, put my name in the hat to, to have a go at it.
Okay.
For a year. Yeah.
Great.
I think you did a great job, Keith. You did a great job tonight.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
What, the, the meeting mix-up?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a good one.
So I just comment, so the, the town, the elections are on June 30th. So I will have Cheryl reach out to you, and we'll have a special meeting in July to do the election of officers and election of superintendency Union Number Three members and subcommittee assignments. It should be a brief meeting, but we should do that after the election.
Yes. So does that, yeah, so that answers your question, I think. Kelly, that.
Yeah, I was just saying, because I know the meeting starts with Greg, and then we start, you know, right away with trying to decide on who is what. So I know it, you know, we didn't want, obviously, it would be a violation of open laws for us to discuss outside of the public entity of, you know, who wants to do what and stuff. So that's why we figured, you know, maybe we should just bring it up tonight, or I figure.
It's a fair question. It's, yeah, it's a fair question. It's probably one that would, probably one that would have been asked at that meeting. So absolutely. And as a point of order, it's also not customary to nominate yourself, although technically, by Robert's rules, you can. But it's a bit distasteful. So keep that in mind as well. And then we'll also be looking for a vice chair, and we'll get that all sorted out. Any other, taking notes here, if anybody has anything off the top of their head they'd like to add to future agenda items, whether it's for the special meeting that will likely occur this summer or, or beyond? It comes to mind. Okay. Approval bills and payrolls, that's being handled with DocuSign. So unless there is any other business which may legally come before the committee, it looks like we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle. Yes, passes unanimously, and we are adjourned. Take care, everybody. Have a good evening.